I have a simple meeting if you please rest with the allegiance followed by everyone to silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Have you seen the list? Item four proclamation presentation we have on before us that brings us to item five public petitions communications and public participation. Any subject in the jurisdiction of town council with a two minute limit if you're on a mobile device or zoom you can start nine or raise hand function. Or if you were in the audience, you can approach the table and say your name and address for the record. So since we don't have any hands up on zoom yet, we'll start with the public in person, George.
At this time.
No worries.
I think so.
Alright Sean Lappin. Let's get on mute.
Hello Sean Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Just here, wanted to know if there's going to be any updates or any talk of road salt, whether it's reports findings, the road salt commission. Very interested in these types of things, you know, I've done more research, I've got an engineer's engineer that mentioned from my property, the wastewater system itself is between eleven and thirteen thousand dollars. And that's just for the wastewater, let alone the actual RO system itself. So we're talking big numbers and I am moving in the fairly near future, so I would like a resolution. You know, at least direction as to what we're doing and what the town's doing to make this right. Thanks.
Thank you, John. I think we will hopefully have some updates during the meeting. Alright. Going once, going twice. Three times, we will move away from elector's patient and go with public hearing items which there are none. Seventy reports of boards committees responsible to the council. Next Thursday, we'll have our firehouse committee meeting. One of the items on there is that we received a million dollar state bond. So we'll be discussing the impact of that to the back house as general updates, I think a negative affirming correctly, they're going to discuss the policy for the change orders with the contract they're going forward. Alright, I think that is it for.
I have a question for you. That state bonding money was always part of the original budget consideration for this project, is that correct?
I don't believe so. Megan, would you know for certain if that was always a part of the consideration?
I don't. Lisa might have better.
Go ahead Lisa.
Yep. Yes, the whole project went through referendum at five million and we had a million set aside for station one forty project. For that grant as part of that five million dollars. So the most the project could be is five million with the being offset by a million dollars for the grant. Now, we could not use the grant for the project part that we're working on currently. Because there's all types of stipulations, we're still trying to get information from the Department of Emergency Management to figure out just how we can use that million dollars going forward. But there's all types of hoops you have to jump through before you can get the money. So we can't use it for the current part of the project that we're working on. It was always planned to be used for the the next piece. Does that answer your question? Uh, I can't hear you. You're on mute.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you Lisa. The other thing I would offer is I have the change order process that the Birch Grove building committee used. If you are interested in seeing an official process, I at Birch Grove, I made a lot of phone calls asking for a process document and I couldn't find one. So we ended up developing our own and approving it, but the whole committee approved it. So if you're interested in it, I'm happy to share it with you.
No, absolutely. Definitely send it our way. Yeah, I'll make it as a copy too, so. Probably, yeah, I was working with that a lot.
Yeah, great. Perfect.
Good. Alright. And so let's see, so that's good for firehouse subcommittee. Brian, since Tammy and Colleen are councilman, you're checking, you're here giving updates for the ARPA subcommittee.
Um, well, you see that you see that we have one, one of the items on our agenda here. For our next meeting, I do expect a request coming in for the we for the historic district commission in relation to lighting and flags for the polls coming forward as we've had those discussions. But no, we are our next meeting, I believe, is towards the end of the month.
Thank you. I believe that should cover everything for boards and boards and committees, also the council, so we'll do the seven B reports of town council liaison and I'll start with councillor Ruba.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That for the special recognition committee that we that there's been no meeting since the last meeting we had for town council. As far as for PCC, I did sit down on that yesterday. A lot of discussions, a lot of different issues that there was a some of the biggest issues that would have an impact on the town council is the, I don't know if it was even the tabling or it was the that the the planning and zoning commission did not take action on the request for the sidewalks based upon a new submission that again, Mr. Foley had sort of mediated between the various parties involved where there was a a revision of the initial plan having the sidewalk going along the side basically closest to a to railroad and and that way to the inside of the green along the carriage road. Which I think that we all saw beforehand, or at least have seen in some iteration over the past week. And so based upon that change that that the decision was to have additional research done on it and then have that brought up for the next planning and zoning commission. Is that that's about accurate, Mr. Foley?
Very much so. Again, no one just about, not too many people on the historic district commission want a sidewalk on the green, but they understand the likelihood of one occurring. And so they presented their best submission and we are working to have it come to fruition. The carriage road side is accurate. That does present a problem for the events that are on the other side of the green. But our intent is we have that green map. So we'll have both sides of the green covered for those events where they're on like like the harvest fest, the scarecrows are on one side. The food truck and such are the other. So I think it's a great. Again, I thank Jody and Mrs. Bob for working with us. Yesterday, we walked the green with our town engineer and they had his ear for a lot of it. It's going to be very, very, very positive for our ADA folks. It's just going to be a great, I think, a great thing for our green moving forward. That's all.
And then, thank you. Thank you very much. And then the other issue that the that they discussed is is again, the while discussing a planning and zoning issue or zoning variance is the revisiting the TCC, the technology park area and we looking and looking at that to sort of determine if it needs to be revised or changed to allow since they their reason was that they changed a lot of the zoning regulations to make it easier for people to to move to do business and to and to move different things. That that TCC area was one where it made it more difficult. So we were looking at that. The last issue which I know that we've all been getting emails on is the the noise complaint issues regarding the dog kennels. And that they were wondering why it was coming to us rather than them, since they're the ones that would have most of the impact on that, the ability to address that issue. And it was basically the position I I informed them that that basically because it came to us first. And now we're looking, that's why we're taking a look at things on a larger level. And I'll leave that for Mr. Foley to address if he if he has it inside the county managers, town managers update. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you councillor Ruba. I had a one meeting the water commission met on the twenty eighth. Not much to report. They had a motor start, their electrical repair performed at the wellhouse and they canceled their meeting for July due to lack of quorum, like most of the things, it's a priority of quieter months. So they'll be reconvening in August. And by sure.
No, you're in the board.
Councillor Cal.
I don't have any reports people with my holidays, so.
Okay. Councillor Murray.
Nothing to report.
Alright, thank you. That brings us to new business eight point one, consideration of resolution for ARCA subcommittee funding use, recommendation for Adam's adventure playground, playground repairs and improvements.
So at our ARCA commission, we unanimously approved some improvements to an area of the added venture for people with limited abilities. And we put a little extra money aside for installation, providing that public works cannot do it, that should that money not be used and public works can do it, then we'll we'll put that money back into ARCA. But it's a great thing. I went up and when the request came, I went up to Adam's Adventure midday and saw a lot of people special needs and and otherwise enjoying Adam's Adventure. And it's just just a win to get that other section added or repaired.
Thank you Brian. If you see Bruce is also on tonight.
Bruce, you want to, can you describe what that exactly is? If you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think it's me.
Yep. So basically, the majority of the the funding is for the play panels that are on closest to the pavilion. Those were constructed by a engineering class from UConn, which can't be replaced. So talking to a former member of Adam's Adventures foundation, they they reached out to Adam's parents and they were happy with the the play panels that were going to replace the existing ones at this point in time. The other ones are for play mats that or swing mats, they go underneath the swings. There's been a lot of wear from his for how much usage those swings are getting. So when their feet are dragging, it's digging and wearing into the material on the on the ground. And talking with Peter Staba from BLU, we thought that this would be the best fit to.
Oh, we lost your audio for a second, Bruce, but.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You got the majority of it. I think you said it was there were eighty eight some of the issues of the damage, right?
Yeah, from under the swings the mats are. And then we got play panels that are replaced ones that are not functioning.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. Are there any other questions from council members?
I should have a comment. I think it's great to see that we are making a measured but good investment in this playground. My kids are now too old to care, but it is a really, it has been a really fun playground for my family and for numerous other families in town and around town. And people come in from out outside of town. I've had meetups there with friends who have children with different different abilities. And this is like the perfect playground. So I'm really happy that this is in town, that we are making an investment in keeping it in good shape. I, Bruce, thank you so much for that update. I'm especially thrilled to hear that Adam's parents are were brought into this discussion. I think that's a wonderful way to continue to be connected with the initiative that started so long ago. So thank you, and I'm very excited about this.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing not if you get a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in eight point one. So it's very sexy by councillor Ruba. Alright, see no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. That is unanimous that brings us to eight point two, which is consideration of resolution proving an application to the Department of Transportation for the community connectivity grants.
So this is a very competitive grant. I don't have a very positive outlook as I can assure as well aware of, but it's going to be largely used or an attempt to largely use it for some of our ADA needs in our parks and further push the needle along on there. Megan, do you kind of want to explain a little bit more if you could as to what that is?
Yeah, so we're looking at I think we've revised down to seven locations that were identified in the study that was done with Chucky and then the and the Girl Scouts back in September. That will provide hopefully with the funding ADA parking, ADA pathways and concrete pads that will be used for future portable bleachers and wheelchair viewing access. The bleachers would not be covered as part of the funding, but construction otherwise, the rest of the license would be covered.
Important, no, it's a hundred percent of grant funding up to eight hundred thousand. So there's no match until we go over that number.
Any questions? I guess the first one is obviously if we don't get the full amount, would there be kind of some prioritization on, or do you know if there's prioritization on these different sites, what projects are probably from first?
Yes, I believe that list is the prioritization that you have listed on the
Yeah, those who identify three specific project that you wanted to prioritize.
We went with we went with Bruce and and your consensus of people, what are our priorities here in the the ADA folks as well? And so we came up with, you know, the field was most used and and where they'd be most needed.
And I think another question is if we get a partial funding, can any of these improvements follow under potential ARCA requests or even the bleachers and I think the pads, I think the pads will be there, but the bleachers things aren't covered in this for that also potentially following your ARCA expenditure.
Some that already is there.
Okay.
Like laying back on the list.
Yeah.
But certainly, as we get towards the end, if there's anything, I think ADA has has been very successful. Great to spend that.
Thank you, Brian. Councillor Murray.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a recommendation that in as part of the application process, you might consider requesting letters of support from our state delegation to go along with the grant requests that it has been my experience in other departments that having that type of support letter can often help a grant application. And there's no conflict of interest, there's no reason why, or like an ethics reason why they shouldn't do that if if they so choose to write a letter of support.
Way ahead of you.
Awesome.
And we're helping them write them.
Oh, perfect. Even then.
Yeah, so I'll give a shout out to Megan. Megan drafted a letter and it made some minor adjustments, but I named one and you know, I think certainly other council members, if they would like to provide any additional supportive documentation, I'm sure Megan would appreciate it. It could show the ground swell of the community support as well as our state delegation. I'll say councilman.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll introduce a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in eight point two.
So move.
So by councillor Ruba, second by councillor Murray, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. There is eight point three, which is consideration of resolution to clear various items obsolete from the Board of Education.
So this is a standard thing. If you look through it, it's it's stuff with little no value. Yeah, VCR DVD player, that kind of stuff. Some old technology that they're looking to unload and do it properly.
And I think I usually ask this, please, every other time we have to go through this. Do residents have access if they're going to make this obsolete? You know, if they're going to put out the sale or basically get like dumping for free, can residents have a chance to grab any items or take a request for it if like a rate of refusal? You know, I don't know if any of the technologies still usable, like if someone wanted an DVD player, VCR player for whatever reason.
I don't know the answer to that. Mike Wilkinson, would you happen to know the answer to that? I hate to throw him on the spot there. Whether or not, I know that can be problematic if they were to be able to do that, but it also makes sense on other levels. I can plug that for you.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea right now. Thing I think there's just always that interest and every there's especially a lot of smaller items. They think you were like, oh, I could use it. Use a DVD player, I could use this, you know, if this town's getting rid of that material, similar to like, you know, we put up the vehicle for for sale as soon as we made obsolete kind of thing. Yeah. Any other questions? Alright, seeing that I'll introduce a motion to approve the resolution of that line eight point three.
So.
Councillor Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Ruba. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This unanimous, finally eight point four is we need some boards and commissions, I would introduce a motion to approve the women of Rapid Frontier to the Commission of Equal Disabilities for a term eight one twenty three through eight one twenty six.
So.
Excellent by councillor Ruba, second by councillor Murray. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
If I can, if I can just.
Yeah, of course.
That also just to sort of go on some of the other positions that there, I know that there's several applicants that are out there for some of the other different various positions that it looks like that some of the positions that people applied for, which came through our nominating committee actually would fall under either the PCC or South or another group. So I referred them over to the town manager as well as today corporate for their decision as far as where it actually falls under for who's got the authority over the nominating on that.
Okay, great. Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
That brings us to nine old business, which there is none, which brings us to ten report of the town manager. So take it away, Brian.
Great. In front of you, you have the town managers report. I encourage you to read it some highlights. You'll see a poet laureate program that this is, we're going to start here in the town talent and basically we'll name a whole laureate through a process in working in concert with the library. And they'll write poems and recite them at certain events and and meetings and such. It's just a positive thing to encourage that type of craft. We're currently in an expired trooper contract concerned to me, but I guess that's the way it happens every year. The state doesn't get it to us till it's pretty much darn expired anyway. So I'm working with attorney Conti and a couple of so that the the trooper contract came over with a lot of different changes, including a thirteen page amendment that the AG's office required to have attached to the contract, which the attorney Conti has reviewed, had some questions, and we're going to be with desk legal this week and hopefully get it signed. I have a request that we have a better. If you look at the back of the town managers report, the last page, that is the extent of our crime data and crime reporting, which in law enforcement is is I'm looking for some mapping improvements and some data. So that we have some better clarity as to what's going on in the public safety in our town. We'll work that all through the contract. I'm currently an employee evaluations. Things are going very well. If you look, we're also, we have that Eagle Scout project going on at Crandall's in the gazebo area. It's coming out fantastic, so much so that we're going to, we're going to double down on it with DPW and clear out more of the water view. As you drive down from the center of town past Crandall's, you can actually see the pond now and how great it looks. We're going to make more of a water view there as we drive through and that that entire park area, I hope to have a decent water view there as a lot of invasive species have come over and taken over the waterline there. Anecdotally, there was something on social media about a copperhead being found. There was not a copperhead. It was a water snake and harmless. In regards to the EPW consultant that we hired to to look at the apparatus and the equipment that we have, the DPW is sort of the one we had with the the public safety, which saved us without exaggerating millions. We have that report. We got it early. Not this previous week, but the week or late later than two weeks ago and Director Lappin was on vacation. He's back. We meet with him. I believe tomorrow, and we'll go over the consultant's report and all the recommendations. The good news is we're not far off. We don't have this abundance of extra equipment that we need to shed and we're not way underserved either with that. They do make some good recommendations. I want to meet with Director Lappin. We will certainly employ some of those. If not all of the recommendations they make and also with some savings towards the town that'll certainly outdo the cost of the consultant report on the other end. So it was a worthy venture and we hope to have have that at least or out to you guys very shortly. As far as the kennels and the noise complaints and neighbors in the back and forth there. Some points, there's been multiple attempts to mediate and the attempts were made by the state troopers office and our animal control. The kennel itself has been sold and there's been some, that's a better way to put it, some enhancements to the program and that is they're doing more of a doggy daycare war numbers. Which has created more noise. By all estimations, bringing in our town attorney, our building, fire, building folks, our fire marshal and our town planner. Everything they're doing is well within kennel laws with the Department of Agriculture and with the Department of Health. And within our town code. So there there at this point appears to be nothing that we can do on a zoning level with with what is happening there. We've we've employed a sound meter out in the early morning hours with our town engineer. We've discussed it with our state trooper and our animal control officer. We're still waiting on a couple more opinions, legal opinions. I expect that within the week I will have a a response to the the main complaint that I'm Baxter wrote about the noise and and what type of options there are over there at this point. So the youth services play is going well. That's coming up towards the end of the month. Very, very I mean, seventy five kids. It's fantastic. Much like a summer camp is going well. This has been a very great rebound summer for the town of town and the youth programs. Megan's got us a couple grants there. Thank you, Megan. And she continues, as you saw tonight, to apply. The library programming is going on as planned. The development behind Big Y Santini is going forward. As usual, the firehouse on Gearing Road is with some minor pickups is on schedule to go exactly as planned. Thank you again to Megan for her work in keeping that moving forward. I'm going to have Bruce, our public works, I mean, our Parks and Rec person, look into Crandall's further. We used to have a diving board and a platform out on the raft out there. And we're going to look at some market funding to consider both of those and getting them back. And we also bought a tool, Bruce did funded it for public works to start dragging the bottom and getting rid of the lily pad weeds that you see there. Literally, this will cost two hundred dollars. So it's a good investment. When you look at swim area and you see some of that while we're in the neighborhood, there's an ADA walkway down into the water that's challenged and needs some repair. We'll look at all that, but but as you can see, I consider Crandall's to be a real jewel of our town here and an underutilized one and they could use beautification. But it really affects the top of the morale of our town, I think, to see it a nice park there. So thank you to Bruce for buying that for us and and public works to get that done hopefully this week. That's all.
Actually, one quick question. I forgot to ask during the reports, the council is any updates from the road salt task force, any potential timelines for the release of that report?
It's quick. Yeah, it's coming. So hopefully we'll know by Thursday, hopefully. We'll have a meeting scheduled and then I would say, hey, putting a timeline on it, within a week or two, we'll have those reports out.
Okay, great. And then I think councillor.
Oh, you know, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was going to be my question as well as the is the report. So this is going to be the initial consultant report for consultant that we hired through the town or is this?
This is, yes, this is going to be the Langdon report, I believe. Mike, do you want to give an update as to where we are with that?
Could you say it again, Brian? I'm having trouble listening or hearing.
No problem. Where where are we with the, we have a meeting this week where we're going to we're going to schedule a meeting and and talk about when we're going to put the report out, right, and how we're going to do it? The water.
Yeah, correct. There's, yeah, that's still in the process of figuring out how that's going to go about and be released. So that should be coming up again after last week's meeting.
Not a long process. That's a one meeting thing and this is how we're going to do it and when. And we'll get eyes, but obviously a priority to councillor Murray and Lucio. I'm sure everyone here actually that we get that if they are safe, including myself.
Thank you, Brian. Councillor Rua, anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, questions from council members? Councillor Cal.
Just one question I want to know, I need to answer without the kennel. Is it licensed by agriculture, Department of Agriculture for voting and training?
Yes, they are. They've, I don't know, licensed is the right word, but they are legally.
They are legally, yes, they are legally operating, but what they are licensing for because I know that the head of department, whatever his name is, I think Dean. He was there and he told them that voting training, but it's not for agriculture. for aggressive dog training. And that's what they're doing because I spoke, even though I spoke to ex-owner. And while he was repeated, there was no complaints whatsoever. There was no noise and there was a noise green eight and eleven. And then the second session was three to five. Now this one is like from six, as you saw it. Six earlier morning. So isn't, isn't the neighbor to say commercial? Get father, everything that, but he has to consider. It doesn't matter. It's like if I find a noise that on Gooseland and Melville, obviously somebody is going to come out. Somebody is going to make a complaint. So what is going to happen to me then?
That's a different scenario. In regards to the, the cat and the aggressive bike training, if they are doing aggressive bike training, we discussed this with our town planner and our town attorney. There are some extra hoops that we believe they have to jump through and they would if they are. Everything we're doing, they're doing based on their research is well within what they're allowed to do. And it's the six thirty in the morning drop offs of the kennel dogs that is stirring up the noise.
Would it be, they should be inside the building?
There is no building. Speaking of which, they're considering putting in the building. Um and how are we going to handle that? That's only to be discussed. The metal building to contain the noise. But that's, that's going to that'll be an interesting topic for zoning to consider. On one hand, we don't want them expanding there, but at the same time, we do want to contain the noise. There is no bike training going on at six thirty in the morning. As I said, I sat out there, I've done more important stakeouts in my life, but but I, I, it's very important to the town and, and it's loud. I would certainly, if I were a neighbor, be upset to say the reason. So I, I empathize uh with those. And I, I've spoken personally by voice, text, and email, as you're aware. Uh with the complaint, it is going to be a difficult proposition uh for him and the town does not have a lot they can do. I directed him to the troop commander at troop C, should he feel the need to really question whether or not enforcement is necessary. Our trooper has consulted with the GA, the prosecutor here in Towne County in regards to enforcement action. Um and it did not receive a warm welcome as I, I would concur. I'm sure the prosecutor on council would concur as well that that's a difficult enforcement maneuver to take and could be costly for the troopers on the other end. Should the town send an animal control officer to do some enforcement action there, I would expect the, the kennel is already represented by an attorney to fight it vigorously. Now, would that be handled in the courts or a hearing officer here? That's yet to be determined. But we're working through all that should that come to that. However, I do not believe that enforcement will be an option, but I'm waiting on some more information.
Well, I hope there's some kind of cooperation from him and and he should have some kind of consideration for the neighbors.
Agree. And it's, and it's, and yes, the woman who runs it. There's been those mediation efforts. You know, two parties together, let's talk this through. It has not worked out and now there's some back and forths going on where there's no ways being broadcasted from all sides. It's becoming problematic. We want to de-escalate here. The troopers and animal control are aware of that, that de-escalation is key here. I've seen these things. Um and badly right down to, you know, needing a necropsy for the the animals. So we don't look to have that here and, and de-escalation, but it's it's been a kettle since longer than I've been here. In seventy-two, it was registered as a kennel, was already operating as a kennel prior to that. Officially, what was registered with the town in seventy-two, some laws were done, put together or some zoning codes put together in seventy-seven and ninety-three defining it out, but Grandpa Kettle is already, kennel is already there at that point, unfortunately. I, I feel bad for everybody involved.
As I said, it's been there, but there was no issues until a couple years until it was sold out and
Yes, that's accurate.
And I don't know if it's to me, I think the way I'm looking at it, I don't know. I don't think anything is going to happen besides the side of the top. I don't think so. I don't expect anything.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe it, but like this is one of them is already decided to move out to the town. One of the neighbors and I don't know what, but they can sell back them house, just get a little more, whatever it is. That's another issue. How many issues they're going to have? We have to cut them out. Well, water. Uh the other one, what you call it, that how many issues that town plan is going to have.
Or they're complicated and we don't have more than a handful or some thankful and then they're manageable. But these are complicated.
It's a very small town. But there shouldn't be much of anything, but there should be some action taken.
I'm over to suggest.
So I'm, I'm at least hopeful that, yeah.
It's a town.
I mean, I'm hopeful that perhaps, you know, what they're considering to do with, I mean, the partial expansion of the noise buffer that Brian has mentioned. I know this is quickly becoming a very personal neighbor to neighbor issues that there's not too much we can do in the legislative body, but I think Brian said they're taking a lot of action and hopefully whatever the business is doing, even if they're expanding their business, maybe you know, they're hearing this tonight, they're maybe taking a moment to read our minutes that, you know, they should try and reach some remediation issues with neighbors again before things get worse and that if they do any improvements that they're doing, so be mindful of and taking actions that limit the noise. So that's just my, my suggestion to bring it to the, to the public and I think it's been discussed quite a bit. So hopefully the owners of that business are maybe taking a moment to hear this and read this and take that into consideration as they improve this forward. And Councilor Luba, I know you're going to jump in.
Nope.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. I'm good.
All right. Any other questions for Brian? Seeing none, move to eleven, adoption of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes outlined in eleven point one and eleven point two.
So.
So moved by Councilor Luba.
Second.
Second by Councilor Murray. Uh seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, corresponds to council.
We, the only correspondent that has come in between June twenty-seventh and today is regarding noise concerns about the kennel. Uh we've received, I believe, nine emails from one property owner and one email from another.
All right, thank you, Councilor Murray. That brings us to ten thirteen chairperson's report. Uh chair hour last week had one resident come in, had a brave robust conversation about the sidewalks in the green. Um yeah. It was, you know, we didn't always agree, but it was very respectable discussion. And then we received one certified letter, I think it's a formality from the Baxter Farm Community Water Association uh regarding a replacement of a ten thousand gallon tank. The town hall is already aware and I think it goes to DPH. So they're working on that process. Otherwise, I have no major updates for the chair. And that brings us to fourteen communications and petitions from councilperson. So hoping to forward any of those. Councilor Murray.
Sure. You've heard it from me before and I appreciate some side conversations you and I've had, Steve, but I am formally requesting that we revisit the flag policy. Uh in June, I've seen the pride flag raised above our state capitol. I've seen the flags flown and numerous town halls across the state and seen pictures of the pride flag displayed at the White House. My kids have asked me again and again why there is no pride flag flying at our town hall. And I would like to change the answer to that question. I also wanted to piggyback on something Brian said about the youth summer theater show. Uh the show dates are Friday, July twenty-eighth and Saturday, July twenty-ninth. The show itself is Disney's Descendants. Uh tickets are on sale. I think the public can buy tickets at the Human Services Department. And they are assigned seats. So you want to uh get tickets if you, if you're planning on going and you can get tickets ahead of time. I think they're a little bit less expensive and also you get side seats. Um and the kids are having a really good time doing that. Um I also wanted to ask a question. This is something that came in through communications and I know that some of the answers have been some of the issues have been answered, but I still don't have the answer to the recent notification that was on the tax bills that went out. Um there's a statement on the tax bills that says the state will reduce your grants to your town if local spending increases by more than two point five percent for the previous fiscal year. And I know that part of the answer I heard was that staff have indicated that if the town were to increase the operating budget by more than two and a half percent or some identified inflation rate after certain adjustments are made, then the grant revenue would be reduced. But I have no idea and I haven't been able to get an answer as to uh where that information is coming from. Is there a state law? Is there a state policy this is referencing? Um so I'm hoping that the town manager will continue his efforts that he's already. Yeah, please.
I think Lisa gave me an answer. I didn't forward it back to you. Uh Lisa, do you want to, do you want to hit that right now if you could on mute?
Sure. I don't have the statute number. I did send that to you. Um there's two pieces here, Katie. Councilor Murray, I'm sorry. Um the first part is the requirement to have that language on the tax bill. Um that's one state statute that, under the tax laws, that we have to put there. The second part is another, and, and I don't have the legislation number, but the second part outlines the whole requirement where the state was trying to limit the increases in taxes um through legis- legislation. So there's a law out there that with municipal revenue sharing, if we were to increase our budget after certain adjustments, if you can reduce it by debt, you can reduce it by capital. Um certain municipal entity, there's different adjustments to your overall budget number. Once you reduce that, if the increase compared to, and special education is another piece of it. Compared to last year with the same adjustments, if it's over two and a half percent or the rate of inflation, so the rate of inflation was almost seven percent this year. If it were to exceed one of those two amounts of the higher amount, then our dollar for dollar municipal revenue sharing grant money that we get from the state would be reduced by the amount that goes over. And I don't have the exact formula, but that, that is the the logic behind that legislation was to try to limit budget increases in municipalities.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm sure Brian will send you the exact statute number. I, I did send that to him.
Will you send me the statute? I appreciate it. Thank you. And one other thing I just wanted to say in a public forum. Uh Brian and I did have a very good conversation earlier this week about communications that go out to residents. And I would, as I said in our, in our phone conversation, but I, you know, in the interest of transparency, I would ask that the town manager consider how communications to residents from various staff are kind of overseen and processed within town hall and you know, consider if there needs to be a policy about how that's done, that you go ahead and amp up about that or bring it to us, whatever you think is appropriate, but I, I appreciate that you're always willing to take my call and talk to me about the random things that come up. So this is one of them. Thank you. Yes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh obviously, I think I've, one, I sent to Brian earlier this week or actually I think maybe today about some concerns regarding localized flooding on a unpaved road and appreciate the efforts that he and Scott did to check in on that space because it is a little concerning and got some clarification on on the issues there. And I also reached out to the BPW report. So I appreciate the update to council and I'll be seeing that pretty shortly. Uh the other one is obviously Brian's completed his first full year with the town and we had our executive session regarding the review and just want to thank him for his continued efforts as town manager and looking forward to future success in the near, soon years.
Thank you. I enjoy serving at the pleasure of council.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments or questions or petitions or petitions? Seeing none, we'll move to item fifteen, public listed participation. On any subject within jurisdiction of town council with a three minute limit. If you are on Zoom, you can hit star nine or the raise hand function. Or if you're in the audience, you can approach a table and as a reminder to state your name and address for the record. So start with in person. Got it, George? All right, we'll bounce back to Sashawn. John Lappin.
Hello, Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Um it's good to hear from the town manager that the Langdon engineering report is closer to being released and there's some finalization there. Um I know a lot of residents would like to see what the next steps are. Uh myself included in that. And so I'm hopeful this will come out shortly and we'll have some steps to mitigate this and have solutions going forward. So I look forward to it and I want to thank people for their, their hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sir, anyone else in the vote that would like to speak? Going once, going twice. Three times, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-six PM.
So.
Second by Councilor Luba, second by Councilor Murray. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.